I'm good. Just wanna come in from outside and yeah.
It's seven o'clock time to get the ball rolling. It's time to you at seven o'clock and it's time to call the Ferrisburg City Council meeting for Monday, February third, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Amber, could you call roll, please?
Sure. Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember DeWitt.
Here.
Councilmember Kate.
Yep.
Councilmember Seias.
Here.
Councilmember Sterling.
Here.
Councilmember Murdock.
Here.
Mayor Carlson.
Here. If we could all rise for the invocation by Councilmember Bill Kate, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord God, well, thanks for the blessings of this day and prayers for blessings on the night ahead. We come to you asking that you be with all the men and women who wear the uniform of our country to keep them safe, especially those who find them in a path of danger. We ask especially for those who are defending our borders. We also ask for your protection for those who serve us as first responders to keep them safe in their sometime danger. And be with us this night as we discuss the business of the city and attempt at our best to exercise your gift of government. In your name we ask it. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, earthy and just as proud.
Moving on to public comments, number five on the agenda. This time on the agenda is for any citizen direct brief comments or questions to the city council. Time for public comments will be given when an agenda item is discussed. Citizens who wish to make a public comment on agenda items are asked to stand against the wall by the podium to ensure visibility and to be recognized. After being recognized by the mayor, please give your name, your address for the record and proceed with your comment or question. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And we also have a three-minute clock as well. Do we have any public comments this evening? Yes, please.
Lisa Royce, one seven seven zero zero Navajo. Um, I would like the council to bring up again about the sign ordinance. Um, last year it was, um, basically held non-enforceable last year. Um, I own multiple properties in the city of Gran Haven, Village of Spring Lake, City of Muskegon. My girlfriend lives in Norton Shores, Gran Haven Township. The city of Ferrisburg is the only municipality around that allows two signs. That is a basic freedom of speech violation, in my opinion. Um, I understand having sides, signs with certain size. Um, I can also see having one sign per person on, on a lot. So you don't have twenty-seven Trump signs or twenty-seven Biden signs. I mean, I, I understand the obnoxiousness of the whole thing. But the last couple election and, and I have a feeling it's gonna be like this from here on out for a while. Um, that we should have the, the right. I mean, I live here. This is where I vote. I can't vote in the other communities where I own property. So that's, you know, taxation without representation. So, you know, we can go into all of this, but I, I truly believe the city of Ferrisburg is the only one around that, that is, is halting our, our speech. And I, I believe that we need to bring it up and we need to bring it up soon. Um, I'm totally fine with the thirty, I mean, it's thirty days or forty-five days before an election. I mean, that, that, that's all can be worked out. Size of the signs, totally get it. One sign per person, great. To me, I'd like them down twenty-four hours after the election because they don't need to be up that long, but to, to stop our voice. It, 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 it needs to, it needs to change. Thank you.
Your Honor, isn't the sign ordinance coming before the planning commission?
Yes, the planning commission is reviewing the sign ordinance at this time.
So Lisa, I would suggest you go to the planning commission and make your views known.
Thursday coming up.
This coming Thursday?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is it on the planning commission agenda for Thursday?
Yes.
Is it? Okay.
Yes.
Good. So Thursday, seven o'clock at City Hall.
Oh, Your Honor.
Yes.
Didn't we waive that?
For the last election, yes.
Yep.
Well, in the middle of it.
Yeah.
Okay. And you changed them all.
We wanna put something in place so that we're prepared. Is that gonna be satisfactory, Lisa? Okay. Anyone else have any other further pub- public comment? Seeing none, let's move forward. Moving on to item number six on the agenda, consideration for approval of the consent agenda. Six A is approved the January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five city council minutes as printed. Six B is approved the bills memo in amount of a hundred and seventy thou- seventy thousand dollars. Hundred and seventy sixty-four dollars and thirty cents. Approve a gift and donation policy.
Your Honor, I move for approval.
Or any discussion? Amber, you call roll, please.
Councilmember Seias.
Yay.
Councilmember Sterling.
Yes.
Councilmember Murdock.
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilmember DeWitt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kate.
Yes.
Mayor Carlson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Uh, moving on to, uh, seven A, new business, a resolution honoring Jeff Style for his service to the city of Ferrisburg.
We have Mr. and Mrs. Still here, Jeff's parents.
Did you wanna say a few words, Craig, or just go ahead and read this? Okay. I'll read this into the record, all right? Okay. So we have a resolution here. Whereas Jeffrey D. Still served dutifully and with distinction for the city of Ferrisburg for nearly two decades. And whereas during his years of service, beginning with the Recreation Commission on December seventh, nineteen eighty-eight, the Planning Commission on December seventh, nineteen ninety-eight, and City Council on two thousand and oh-three, and mayor from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven. Jeffrey spent countless hours for the residents of Ferrisburg preparing for and attending these meetings. And whereas Jeffrey supported the purchase of the former Ferrisburg Elementary School and his mayor directed staff to move City Hall offices to the building in two thousand and ten. Supporting created a dog park at Coast Guard Park and worked to have Ferrisburg host the Coast Guard Community Picnic for many years. And whereas Jeffrey's service and willingness to represent the citizens with his leadership and dedication was well-known throughout Northwest Ottawa County and beyond and made Ferrisburg a better place. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Ferrisburg expresses its superior appreciation to Jeff Style for his years of dedicated service to the city of Ferrisburg. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the city of Ferrisburg requests all citizens of Ferrisburg to join the City Council in recognizing Jeffrey for his service to the citizens of Ferrisburg and the area. Dated February third, two thousand and twenty-five. Did you wanna get a picture, Craig?
Okay.
Like us.
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and your picture up there is better.
Would you like it?
Well, it, it wouldn't be natural if I didn't have something to say, so. This has been probably the hardest thing. Holy crap, here I go already. One of the hardest things we've endured in our life, losing a son. While I compose myself, I'm gonna present this to Craig. Okay, well, I was, I only wanted to talk to him. But anyway, I presented him with an application for, for donation. We'd like to plant a tree someplace here in Ferrisburg in Jeff's name with a little plaque similar to what they use at, at Lily Cares in Spring Lake, recognizing people. And you might want even open it up for more of the ex-mayors. I know John Ban just passed away and perhaps they'd like to do the same. I was the third mayor of city of Ferrisburg and over the years Jeff and I, uh, in the sixty-two years of Ferrisburg have been involved here for more than half or close to half the years you've been in existence. So we've, uh, we've got a true love for Ferrisburg. We moved out in ninety, ninety-eight to Crockerie where it could have some more acreage and a little bit more space and some animals and things like that. And, uh, but Jeff and Tracy went to school here. Uh, this was their elementary school. And, uh, I know Jeff contributed a lot to Ferrisburg and was very proud of, uh, his citizenship and his contributions to the city. So we thank you for the recognition. We wish he was here to accept it. Uh, we are gonna have a remembrance this Saturday at Spring Lake Country Club from two to five, and you're all welcome to join us. Uh, it'll be wander in, wander out at, 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 at your pleasure. Uh, anything else, any? We just thank you on behalf of Jeff and we're very, very pleased that you would recognize him for his contributions. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Moving on to, uh, seven B, discussion and to take action if appropriate to recommend approval to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission of a Class C liquor license for CRS company located at two oh-one Pine Street. Craig, you wanna fill us in on this?
Yes, the applicant is here. He might want to speak a few words on his application. Um, he's renovating the former Pizza Hut building. And he was requesting a liquor license. So in the past, the city designated the city as a redevelopment area. And so we think there's one more license available under that project. And so the applicant, George, is here to, um, apply for that liquor license. So this will be the first step for city council to make a recommendation to Liquor Control Commission to approve or not approve the liquor license. Then it goes to Liquor Control Commission. They do their job.
Yeah. Can I entertain a motion and support so we can discuss it if possible?
I'll make a motion to support it.
It's a part. Yeah. Motion and support. Anybody have any questions for Craig or discussion?
Is the applicant here? Come on up.
Yes. So, uh, a little bit of explanation about the business that we're starting and, uh, start to operate and looking to open here in the month of April. Uh, this is gonna be a small family business. It's gonna be a mini market and, um, ca- small cafeteria. The main idea of the business is to be a, um, farm, uh, easy pickup location. So we're pairing with all the farms, um, around the, the city. And we're gonna be a, a, a grab and go, easy as to get all the fresh food for all the, uh, people in the community. So that, that is our intention. Uh, the intention for the liquor licenses will have a small seating area, especially in the summer, outside. And we have just, uh, a small seating area where the people can just stop by, sit, uh, buy the local product, um, and just enjoy with us over there.
Um, so you're not gonna have a restaurant per se?
It's not gonna be a full-time restaurant. It's gonna be a cafeteria. So it will just be stop, grab and go, uh, easy menu, sandwich, really simple. Uh, just, uh, a little bit of pre-prepped food, uh, more like a mix in between a mini market and a cafeteria. So it's gonna be that in between both.
So, so I'm assuming the best amount of your, uh, liquor sales would be, uh, um, takeout?
Uh, yeah, we'll, we're planning to buy, uh, sell, um, just regular beer from local vendors or local producers, uh, wine, uh, and then as well serving on the summer area and the outside area.
Okay, thank you. So you're gonna be pouring or you're gonna be selling cans and bottles?
Both. We're planning for both. We're planning to sell, uh, from the fridge, the, the cans. And in the summer, uh, we're planning for pouring.
Okay.
So for that point will be a full liquor license, liquor license, as we understand.
Your partner has something to say.
I'm Cecilia, the wife. But I just wanted to add that we are gonna have a small open kitchen. So we will be cooking there and, uh, we're gonna have maybe eight tables. So people can sit and enjoy food and do a little bit of the shopping and everything together. So we are gonna have drinks. People can drink inside and/or take out. That's, that's like the idea.
Anyone else have anything?
Yeah. Um, is this your first business? Is this your first startup?
Uh, as a restaurant, a mini market, yes.
Yeah, okay.
We did have another business in, uh, the Lake Mall two years ago. It was a small ice cream shop, uh, bakery, coffee. Uh, but we only had it for one year because the, the mall is not doing really well. So the idea was to move the, that business, the ice cream shop, to this new location. But then, um, we love farms and we love the food that they offer. And we drive a lot to be able to have, to get, uh, milk and eggs and everything. So we just thought, let's put everything together and people can just go and shop, you know, for their families and just have it here, easy, fast, convenient, yes.
Yeah.
So.
Anyone else have any other questions? Seeing none. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Amber, you want to call roll, please?
Uh, Councilmember Sterling.
Yes.
Councilmember Murdock.
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilmember DeWitt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kate.
Yes.
Councilmember Seias.
Yes.
Mayor Carlson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Congratulations. Thank you.
Well done.
Moving on to, uh, seven C, discussion and to take action if appropriate to adopt a resolution placing one hundred and seventy-fourth Avenue in the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-nine tip plan, the Transportation Improvement Plan. Craig, you wanna fill us in on this one?
Yes. About every three years, the city gets a project put into the Transportation Improvement Program. And as part of that process, the city council is required to adopt a resolution indicating that they're gonna fund a portion of the project. Part of the project for the one seventy-fourth Avenue, uh, tip project is from, uh, Fifth Avenue to Dogwood Drive. And we're gonna get about four hundred thousand dollars worth of federal money for that project. Restimating it's gonna cost between one point four, one point five million dollars. So the city's gonna be responsible for the remaining portion. This council, this, uh, resolution, in case that city council will budget money for it to pay the local portion.
Yeah. In your, in your note that was in our packet, um, about the twenty-six, twenty-nine tip program. Hundred and sixty-eighth and a hundred and seventy-fourth or a hundred and seventy-second are both mentioned.
Hundred and sixty-eighth is in the current tip, the twenty-three, twenty-six tip, the one seventy-fourth would be in the twenty-six, twenty-nine tip.
And it looks like we're gonna be on the hook for one point one million of that?
Yes. And also in your packet was a breakdown of, of money that is gonna be used to pay for that project. We're using the money from the Public Improvement Project Fund. And so in twenty-six, twenty-seven, you see that we have coming out of that one seventy-fourth Avenue, one point one million dollars. So, and then it shows that there still will be some, uh, fund balance left at the end of the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-seven.
Yes.
Uh, Craig, we, we will have the ability to come up with one point one million?
Yes. We're anticipating revenue will be there for this project.
What happens if it's not there? We accept the money, we have to bond for it, worst, worst-case scenario?
Worst-case scenario, if something came up and the city didn't have the money, we would let the MPO know that you, we couldn't take the project to see if someone other community could use that money.
Okay, thank you. We'd certainly entertain a motion and support on this.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt the resolution pa- placing one hundred and seventy-fourth Avenue in the two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-nine Transportation Improvement Plan.
Support. Support. Does anyone else have anything to discuss? Seeing none. Amber, call roll, please.
Councilmember Murdock.
Yes.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Yes.
Councilmember DeWitt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kate.
Yes.
Councilmember Seias.
Yes.
Councilmember Sterling. Mayor Carlson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Good, thank you. Uh, seven D, discussion and to take action if appropriate to solicit bids for Fire Barn Park improvements, phase one.
So this is something that, uh, we've been working on for a number of years to get some improvements over at the Fire Barn Park. Uh, we've tried unsuccessfully twice to, uh, get a trust fund grant. And we're not successful, basically due to the fact that we were getting a deductible fifty points because of the land conversion issue with the, the Fire Barn Park. And so, um, when it didn't get the funding from the, uh, trust fund grant, uh, city council at that time indicated that they would like to include some money to do some improvements at the Fire Barn Park and put some money in the, in the budget. So for the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we put, included, uh, three hundred thousand dollars for that project. Actually, we put, we kept that money in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And so in your packet, it has the breakdown, the same fund that's gonna use to fund the streets, the Public Improvement Fund. We're gonna estimate that at, um, well, at six thirty, twenty-four, there was a million two in there. And we got some revenue and then we were planning on spending some money for the Tri-Cities Connector Path, the Fire Barn improvements. Uh, put some money for the bridge. Uh, we're gonna need some money for one sixty-eighth Avenue. And we wanna do some improvements at the, uh, DPW garage. So we're estimating that the fund balance at June thirty of two thousand and twenty-five would be at nine hundred thousand. And in twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll get some more revenue for property taxes for the Ferrisburg Road Millage. And then we're gonna, um, spend some money for, on Pine Street, hopefully some local streets. Uh, we're expecting to spend a hundred thousand for the Tri-Cities Connector Path. We're gonna get some money for the Out of Kind Road Millage. And again, we'll put some money away for the bridge fund. So at, uh, June of twenty-six, we're estimating that six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars would be in there. And twenty-six, twenty-seven would be the last year of the Ferrisburg Road Millage. It was a five-year millage. It expires at the end of December of twenty-six. And so that was the last year that we'll expect that money in there unless we put that back on the ballot and try to get a renewed with the voters here. And then in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're down to one point one million dollars for the one seventy-fourth Avenue project. So with June thirty of two thousand and twenty-seven, we're estimating we'll have close to four hundred thousand dollars in there. And then going further down into the future, we're looking, we'll get some property tax money. We'll spend some money on local streets for four hundred thousand dollars, which doesn't go very far. And we'll get some Out of Kind Road Millage that was recently approved for ten years. So then, one of the issues with this public improvement fund is we're not getting local streets done like we should. We need to do some more local streets. Um, we're working on the budget for next year and our public works supervisor is putting together a list of streets and the cost and they're not cheap. So the question on, on the docket tonight is, does the city council want to spend the three hundred thousand? Well, just back up a little bit. There's three phases to the improvements at Fire Barn Park. First phase is gonna be rerouting the bike path around the fire station, doing the parking lot. Second phase is, is not the basketball courts could turn into pickleball, but the tennis courts are gonna turn into pickleball courts. And the third phase would be the, uh, splash pad. And so we put together the master plan, city council adopted the master plan for improvements at that park. As we were getting ready to go out for bid for this project, we were hoping to do it in the fall, go out for bid and have it done before, uh, December first. But as we got into the nitty-gritty of designing this project, the Public Works Department looked at it and the city engineer looked at it. And with all the new hard surface in there, they're concerned about the existing storm drain not being of size to handle the additional stormwater. So we went back to the design table, improved, made improvements to accommodate the stormwater. And while we were doing that, um, there was a section of gravel that was gonna remain gravel between the fire station and the new parking lot. And the thought was, well, when we pave in the new parking lot, why don't we pave that section and have it dedicated more or less for the fire department? So they don't park on gravel. So it'll just make the place look cleaner. So that bring the asset up to five hundred thousand dollars. We have budgeted three hundred thousand for this project. There's about fifty-nine thousand at the Gran Haven Community Foundation that's been raised through donations. So we're short about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the improvements for phase one. If you notice in the public improvement budget there, there's nothing budgeted for phase two or phase three. And Fire Barn Park at this time could do, there's not gonna be enough revenue. And so phase one is really gonna be the, the main focus of Fire Barn Park. So the question on the cut, on the docket tonight is, do we want to use the three hundred thousand, the fifty-nine thousand at the Gran Haven Community Foundation and the city pay the rest out of, by amending the budget to pay for the hundred and fifty thousand? We have, uh, the fund balance in the general fund could pay for the parking lot for the, the fire department. And then do we wanna take seventy-five thousand dollars out of the public improvement fund to pay for this, this improvement?
And phase one is the one that's primarily revolving around safety with Fire Barn, with the fire trucks and everything, correct?
Right. There's a concern with the fire department when they pull a lot of the, uh, out of the bays. People are coming from the south and going to the west, to the lake or something like that. They come around and they don't see the fire engine. The fire engine doesn't see them. There's gonna, just concern with bicycles coming around that quarter.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So what you're saying is part of the paving of the parking lot would be come out of the fire department budget?
We would amend the bu- the, the budget for, come out of the general fund or could you pay, pay, come out of the fire department budget or else the parks department budget?
So the city's gotta come up with an additional hundred and forty, hundred and fifty thousand.
That's correct.
Over what we have budgeted.
That's correct.
Like the.
Seventy, seventy thousand of it was covering, uh, um, parking for the Fire Barn. The recommendation from the engineers was that, uh, we could, uh, we could do a partial parking lot like we talked about originally, without all the spaces. And we could leave the Fire Barn gravel. Um, but then we're gonna pay more in the long term by having an asphalt company come out.
Do a second phase, yeah.
Do a second phase. We're gonna save a lot more doing it all, all the asphalt while they're here at one time.
Well, typically, we can include the, the Fire Barn parking lot with a street project. We're doing a street project like, say, you're doing Michigan Avenue over here. We can tack that on as a bit, as an additional thing, right? Craig?
That's a possibility. I'm not sure if it'd be the same contractor would be willing to do that project, the parking lot or the, um, ways to do the street. I'm not sure.
That's the way we put it out for bids. That's what they're bidding, the street and, uh, that parking lot. But we have an option to pave it in the future at a reasonable cost because it would be included in a street project.
Well, the one sixty-eighth Avenue project is actually an MDOT project.
That's too far. I mean, when we do a local street project.
Oh.
You know, we're gonna have to start repairing some of our local streets. We could tack that on in the future i- as a street project. Correct?
That's correct. That's a possibility, yes.
So I don't know if we have to, at this point. So I don't know if we have to, at this point, approve the whole project or if we want to try to pare it back to what we had budgeted. I'm just throwing that out there, because we do have an option of throwing it on with the, you know, we've done that in the past where we did Sunnyside, they did a street over, we did a street over there and they threw that, the parking lot on as a bit, as part of the bid package.
That's correct. And the Recreation Commission did talk about submitting another grant, trust fund grant, the deadline is April first. But there was concern about if that we did that, it would push the project out another year. And these people that donated money are, you know, they're not seeing any, they had expectation that they were going to receive improvements and they haven't seen anything yet.
I mean, a lot of these donations we got, what, three years ago?
Yeah, twenty-three.
I understand that, I just didn't move forward with something, you know. Now, we have official confirmation that the land swap we did with the, at City Hall here is qualified to offset Fire Barn Park, or is that still in limbo?
We do not have official confirmation, but we have approval to move forward because they think it's a viable project.
So what happens if we have to offset a hundred thousand and it will only allow us to offset seventy? We still don't qualify for federal or state grants, correct?
If we get that product, the one acre over here, we're guessing that it's going to come in higher appraisal value than the Fire Barn, so we should be able to get that one acre. If we get that one acre, we'll join it with the City Hall Park, we do not have to do any improvements on that one acre because they're considering the whole area as recreational use.
And so you're confident that the one acre lot here is going to more than offset what we messed up at Fire Barn Park?
Yes, when they, when they did the appraisal for the eight acres, per acre was higher than what we were getting over there at the fire station.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'll look through.
Your honor?
Yes.
I had a question for Councilman Montgomery, since he's on Recreation Commission. What was the Recreation Commission's discussion and recommendation around this?
I think they, they all understood it makes sense doing it all together. I don't think they'd be disappointed in getting anything done, right? They just want to show progress to our donors. A little concern about, you know, why, why is the Rec Department doesn't want, you know, seventy grand for the fire department held against, right? Again, it all comes out ultimately of the same budget. But yeah, I think, and Craig, jump in, because I wasn't at the last meeting, but it sounded from the January meeting that we just want to see progress, and show our donors that, you know, their money is being put to good use.
That's correct.
Did I hear that correctly, that essentially phase two and phase three are now on hold indefinitely?
Yes. And that might change if the street millage gets renewed?
It changes if we come in some month.
That's, that's a game changer.
So should we wait until this, we know about the street?
Well, those are scheduled until December of twenty-six, so we're going to levy the street millage in twenty-five, we're going to levy in twenty-six. So if city council wants to put on the ballot, they have to do it in August or November of twenty-six.
Your honor?
Yes.
I guess I'm looking for direction from you, Craig, what's your recommendation we do with this?
So I think the seventy-five, I think the whole project should be done at once, the fire, all the parking at one time. That's the seventy thousand.
And I will make that motion.
To go out for bid.
Go out for bid for the entire project.
Knowing that we'll have to amend the city budget.
Do we have any support?
Support.
Any other questions for staff or anybody?
One quick one. I'm making an assumption here that rerouting the bike path would include digging up the existing path that runs parallel to the basketball courts next to one seventy-fourth, right? Because that will all go into the north end?
No, that, that path will stay on one seventy-fourth Avenue. We're trying to eliminate the people using the bike path corner on North Shore Road in front of the fire station. Where the, where the garage doors open up. And Recreation understands.
Right. Right, right, but people are still going to want to cross.
Sure. Which they'll be.
North, north there.
We just don't want cutting in front of them.
But they're still going to cut.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the Recreation Commission understands that people going from west to east are still probably going from the fire station. Because they're not going to go up around the fire station and go to the south to Grand Haven or anything like that.
Your honor?
Yes, I'm assuming there'd be signage directing people coming from the west heading, or from the north heading south to go behind the Fire Barn?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to do something creative to get the traffic from the west to east to use behind the fire station.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more. First, baseball field, what, what, what phase was that included to be?
Phase one.
Phase one, so that'll be, that'll be included with the parking lot?
Well, two parking lot, that's, well, I feel, part of it will be parking lot and most of it will be field.
Just open field?
Just open grass.
Green, green area?
Yep.
Okay.
You'll need to rehash the finances of how to find out how we're going to do this?
We're going to amend, amend the city budget to pay a portion of it from the Recreation Department. And the other portion is going to be amended from the public improvement fund to pay for it.
Is that doable?
Yes.
Is it going to impact any of the other services our residents are used to?
No.
Is it going to cause us to be in a position where we say, I wish I could fix this road, but we can't because we spent all our money on a park?
We're spending seventy thousand from the public improvement, you know, that could produce part of the street, I think we did Michigan Avenue for forty-five thousand dollars, so.
Remember, we have a street millage in two thousand twenty. So funds can be generated through that.
Sure. Anyone else have anything?
Basically, safety.
Rerouting bike path is a safety concern, yes.
Seeing nothing.
Member Montgomery.
Yeah.
Councilmember DeWitt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kate.
Yes.
Councilmember Seis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sterling.
Yes.
Councilmember Murdoch.
Yes.
Mayor Carlson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Good. Moving on to seven E, discussion and take action if appropriate to schedule a work session as a regular agenda item for February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Craig, what did you have on there thus far?
The Economic Development Commission, some feedback from city council, if they want to move forward with one. If so, how they want to set up duties and so forth.
Anyone else have anything that they'd like to add?
I have a question for Craig. Has the state AG responded to our request to dissolve the old Economic Development Corporation?
We sent everything up to the state, we haven't heard anything from them.
We're kind of stuck until we get an answer on that.
I don't know if we will.
Can we follow up or phone number we can call or?
I'll try to follow up.
Send out a bat signal, Lansing?
Your honor?
Yes.
So as I understand it, the state hasn't ruled on the dissolution of the old economic.
We have not heard anything from the state, no.
So we can't hardly move forward.
That's all we're asking.
I'll see if I can get an answer by the next meeting.
So that, I don't know, that can be on the work agenda.
We'll try to have an answer for next meeting.
Good. Anyone else have anything to add? No? Yeah. Craig, you're all set?
Yep.
Very good. Moving on to seven F, work session, twenty twenty-five city council goals. Craig, you want to cover where we're sitting right now on this?
Yep, so city council submitted the goals, on the front sheet, they were all listed. Their like ones were put together by color code. And using the same format that we used for the twenty-five, four twenty, twenty-five, six goals. Talon, the city intern, put together a plan for the twenty-five, twenty-six goals. And what we did was we put all the goals under, like, on the second page, it says fiscal responsibility. She took all the goals that were listed from the city council submitted goals for twenty twenty-five, put that into the front page. Second page, she has it again there, and then the twenty-five, twenty-four, five results area is when something gets accomplished, we'll put it into that box.
Craig, I feel like we had a whole conversation about these and then we just added everything to our goal. Like, there were several of these we had entire conversations of and said it probably didn't make sense to include.
That's what we want to fine tune in this house, and then we'll fine tune it, what do you want on or taken off? And then we're going to sit there and after the next meeting adopt them. So on the front page, is there anything that you want to delete from that front page? This one here, one that Talon put together.
Yeah, I guess we can just go through individually, I, I thought we, anybody jump in if I'm off base, but I guess certain was fiscal responsibility, I thought we talked about not including limited taxing because we're asking for millages, I, I don't want to tell citizens, I don't want to mislead anyone.
Well, it stated limit tax increases, no overtaxing.
Yeah, that's fair, I just, I think it's missed, personally, I think it's misleading, that was my only thought. Why say it? I hope the citizens know we're trying to save that money, wherever we can. On the second one, maintain paved and dirt streets. So I, I guess I would update that, that fourth bullet, Develop City Infrastructure Prioritization and Funding Plan to update, because we've already created that. And, and just add on prioritizing paved, unpaved and dirt streets. Again, I'm just one person, but my thought.
I would agree with that, Will.
I agree as well, Will.
Enhance business environment is good, that's a carryover. Review ordinances, I, I think is a good idea for for, for our, our businesses, that can probably, two and three can probably be combined, right?
Okay.
It all goes to enhancing the business environment. Finalize the plan to rebuild Smith's Bridge. What is the next step of that, Craig? Is that something feasible that this council can do in the next year? I mean, it's our, is it not finalized?
They're getting, MDOT's getting close to the thirty percent design fees, okay, so.
So is there an action that this council is going to have to take in the next year in regards to Smith's Bridge?
Well, hopefully bids will be, city council will know what the bids come in at in June of twenty twenty-six.
To try to get an idea as to how much money we're going to have to come up with.
Right, if any.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that'll happen in twenty twenty-six.
Correct.
Next year.
So there's not a lot of action we're doing in twenty twenty-five?
No.
Your honor?
Yes.
So finalize plans to rebuild Smith's Bridge seems kind of vague to me.
Yep.
I've, I've had, I've heard a lot of people come into our meetings and offer advice on how they'd like to see the bridge redesigned and the final project, the final product be something different than what it is now. Perhaps we should make it solicit public feedback for public, for Smith's Bridge redesign.
You know, the other piece is, is just actively communicating the status to our residents.
The design is moving forward, isn't it, Craig?
Right, the design is pretty much almost all there, at the thirty percent. The cops, we need to do something else, might delay the project a little bit, depends on how major of the change it is.
Well, have some of those changes that the public has suggested been incorporated, I've not seen, I have no idea what's in that design.
So basically, it's going to be the same bridge that's there, except on the lakeside, there'll be an eight-foot path with a barrier between the bike path and the street. And on the bayou side, there'll be the same thing, five-foot sidewalk.
Okay, I believe there's been some discussion about a fishing platform, I've heard that before, that incorporated into the design at all?
We did talk to MDOT about that, and they are concerned that the piers will not handle the extra weight.
What about, what about lighting?
So city council last year approved doing some kind of decorative lighting on there.
That'll be post-new bridge, after the new bridge, or?
After the bridge is up, yeah, or while the bridge is being constructed.
Okay, so it's part of the redesign and the lighting approved, okay.
I would like to see a bridge and spring light with the lights along the bottom.
But essentially, design works done.
Yes, as much as investment.
So what's a, what's a good bridge-related goal for us to accomplish in the next year, Craig? Is there anything we need to focus on as a council when it comes to the bridge, other than just communicating the status of it with the residents?
I think that that'd be the goal, and just let everybody know that it's still on project, and MDOT's committed to doing this bridge in twenty twenty-six.
So maybe we can adjust the goal to that, just communicating that with our residents, staying on top of it.
Communicating Smith's Bridge progress.
Yep.
Public?
That's fair.
Jumping to parks and recreation. Create an art council committee and begin displaying artwork in parks and City Hall. Again, I, I thought we discussed that at the last meeting, that we're going to leave that up to if someone is interested in presenting an idea of that to council and leading that charge, but we weren't going to take it on as a council goal, but again.
That's fine with me, but I think we should reconsider, you know, I'm not the greatest advocate for the arts, I have not an artistic bone in my body, but when I start to think about the arts and all that, and entitled entails, you're talking about arts and crafts, you're talking painting, you're talking sculpture, you're talking dance, music. I mean, everything we do in our lives is touched by the arts, and we need to start encouraging that. And I think this is a good way to start to encourage that. I think it's a good way to showcase not only our local talent, but bringing outside talent and a good way for us to distinguish ourselves from other communities in the Tri-Cities. We'd be the first one with an arts council, you know, we need to start leading the way, and I think this is a good start, personally.
Your honor?
So I'd like to reconsider that.
Yes.
I think, I think council's pretty much in favor of that. And I think in the past, we've directed you, if you have people that are interested in it, maybe we set up a committee, whatever. If you want to take that, take that ball and run with the jury, I'll support you.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm bringing this to council as a goal, I, I can go, I can attempt it on my own and bring it up as a work session, and we can do it that way. But I, I just think that it would be a good thing for the council as a whole to conquer as a goal. I think it's, we'd be giving back, that's my feeling on it. But we could schedule a work session and I could bring in, you know, several Um, but we could schedule a work session and I could bring in, you know, several residents that I've talked to through the years about, um, um, developing an arts council and we can bring them in and, and, you know, I, I guess everybody has some artistic, uh, uh, art, artist in them, you know, no matter what we do in our jobs, no matter what we do in our pastime, arts touches everything from, from what we eat every day to the sports we watch. I mean, some, an artist is designing all those logos and designing all that artwork. And, and we need to start encouraging that and we need to start embracing that. And, and that's why I think it's important that we lead the way in that. That's my opinion. Um, if, if we want to do this on a work session, I can bring it up as a work session, but I think it would be something good that council could do as a whole personally.
I think, I think that's something that if that's your passion, you know, grab the ball and run with it, you know, we'll support you to whatever, you know, uh, um, you've brought this up several times. Um, I'm, I'm willing to listen and, and to work with you on it, but quite honestly, I don't have time to, uh, do it personally. So if, you know, if you want to bring people forward, we can look at setting up an arts, uh, council or arts commission or, um, whatever. Or maybe assign the beautification committee or something of that nature to move this forward. I don't think anybody on the council is, is objection to it.
Your honor?
But we need somebody to run with the ball.
So I too have no issue with celebrating the arts in Ferrisburg. I guess what, where I keep, what I can't understand or, or what I have not understood yet is what function a council or a committee serves the Ferrisburg government. Uh, most of our boards and committees give recommendations to the council and then we either adopt them or don't. Um, so that's why, like personally, I think a work session is probably needed. So we, like, I asked last time that we talked about this for like a vision. Like what is the, what is the purpose within the Ferrisburg government of an arts council? I still don't really know that, but I understand what you're saying, that it's certainly important to celebrate, but I, I just don't. I need to understand what function it serves in our government before I can support it and make it.
Well, it, I, I think it supports our citizens. I, I think it, it supports the local talent. And not only that, but it could bring in revenues through, we have an art sale in a park, we have application fees, we can bring in revenues that way. We can bring in revenues from commissioning paintings in a, in the city hall. There's all sorts of ways that we, that the arts council could give back to the city and to the city government in my, my belief. And, and not only that, but distinguish us from, from the other communities in the surrounding area. And that's what I'm trying to accomplish. That's all. I mean, if, if, if you, if we want to have a work session on this and really go, take it in depth and bring, uh, citizens in to speak on it, I, I would be all for that as well. I'm just, my thought was to bring this to council. So council could, it'd be something good that council could work on together as a goal and something we could give back to the community. But that, that's my opinion.
I, I think it would make sense to have a, a, a work session and get an understanding of the public's interest. And if it makes sense, then we, we can always amend our goals and add it, right?
That's fine. I, I go either way. Like I said last month or last meeting, I go either way, uh.
Your honor?
Yes.
Jerry, do you think it's something that you could, uh, uh, you say you have residents that are interested in this? Is that something you could provide? Input at the next, uh, council meeting, put it on a work session?
Um, sure. I mean, if council wants to put that in the next, uh, work, uh, work session next, for the next meeting, that's fine.
Is that soon enough to talk to people and, I mean, is that giving enough time?
Well, yeah, let, let's postpone it for a month. Maybe we'll, I'll ask for it next, uh.
Well, I don't want to torpedo you before you get going here, but I would like to, uh, explore as, as far as how much participation the city is going to be, maybe a different question. But, uh, um, I would like to pursue it to a point.
Why don't we direct, uh, Craig to put it on the first meeting in March for a work session?
I, I I could see something coming before city council that we need, we're being asked to support, but I could see this being driven by beautification or something. I just don't see, um, anything being driven by city council. It should be being driven by some other group. And then they come to city council looking for funding or support. We're supportive. And I, I question whether we want to be spending our time in a work session on this and we're going to be hashing over the same thing rather than giving it to beautification or some other group like that, that then would come before council. Is this, is having an arts council one of the driving, uh, goals of city council? I don't believe it is. Because I don't see the, I don't see the driving force coming to us saying, hey, we got to do this.
Is that something we could pass to the beautification commission as a work session? And get their opinion on if it makes sense to expand the duties of the beautification?
Your honor, um, beautification is pretty much overworked now.
All right, all right. I understand that, but I don't.
It would probably be better going to the, um, yeah, what, what, what do you?
Recreation?
Rec, 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 so the, the rec committee is, as opposed to beautification. Those, those ladies, uh, on beautification worked their tails off. And in the past, we've tried to give them different things and they said, absolutely not.
And that's part of the, the point of why I said beautification, because I know that, but it, it, I don't believe it should be a council function. A group like that should be coming to council saying, hey, we need your help, city council for this.
I think I would like to have them come before council and at least discuss it and then we can, uh, uh, you know, give it to the parks or re, or recommission, you know, uh, I would like to hear what the kind of ideas are, are out there. And, uh, um, you know, how much support we actually have. And we can always just say, well, we're not going to participate or we can turn it to the recommission.
A lot of the communities have an art thing.
Right.
Art in a park.
Right.
The, the, uh,
I think a lot of them are privately.
Think they are. The city closes the streets to do that, you know, on the main drag in Grand Haven.
Craig, is that something you can find out for us?
Spring Lake has the harvest, whatever that is, and they have the crap show.
But those are all by like the Coast Guard Festival Committee or the different committees, not the city, right?
So the art festival used to be handled really through the chamber.
Okay.
But the chamber is handing it off to a different organization in the future. So the chamber is kind of shifting your focus more, more business and less events. Um, I know it's an individual organization. I, I'll look.
Okay.
Your honor?
Yes.
I, uh, I respectfully, uh, uh, I, I, I don't agree with you. I, I don't think this is a committee issue. I think it's up to city council to create committees and councils, not a committee to create a council.
Yeah, lots.
And, and I think, you know, I think our parks and our beautification committee, they're all overworked as it is. Um, you know, at one point, the beautification committee didn't exist. It was up to city council to create it. It didn't come from another committee. It came from sponsorship from the citizens and then they, they made it into what it is today. And I, I, I don't think this is a committee issue. I think this is a council issue. But I, I disagree, you know, I, I disagree with you respectfully.
I, I would support just bringing it to a work session. Hear the pitch, see if we have community buy-in. We need, obviously, community members to lead this. We can support it and sanction it all we want, but if we don't have non-abuster art experts, if we don't have windy support and participation, it'd be tough to move forward.
I agree.
So who's going to be coming forward?
That would be up to Jerry to provide us with the people.
Well, somebody that's, that's.
Yeah, uh, yeah. Uh, no, but there, there, there are several, I don't want to say anybody's name, but there, there are several citizens that would definitely support this.
So, so we'll leave this on as a goal then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Include it as a goal. I'd just take it to a work session.
Okay.
If it makes sense to add it as a.
All right.
I agree.
We can always discuss it.
Yeah. It'd be good to have your thoughts though.
Yeah, we can bring it up to them.
Um, install lighting bollards along western portion of Coast Guard Park walking path. Um, uh, again, I, I think this is a great thing. We also have to be realistic. Do we have money for this in the next year?
So this is something we put money in the budget for.
Okay. So, so it is budgeted?
It's not budgeted, no. If this is, if this is going to be a goal, it's going to be budgeted.
Okay. Any thoughts on it? Anyone?
I think it's a good thing.
I do too.
I, I put it in there because I use that all summer long and that stretch of the path is not very fun at night.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure.
I think it needs to be done to, uh, enhance safety and, and even security. People feel good and safe about walking through the park wherever they want to go.
Yep. Yeah, I think it's great. I just didn't want to set this up for failure.
Your, Craig, do we have funding for this? Is it feasible?
We'll, we'll try to include funding for the next fiscal year, yes.
Uh, enhance appearance of Coast Guard Park entrance. I think that's something we can probably tackle for minimum, minimal budget. Maybe ask the beautification committee for help.
Um, what do they, what do you mean by enhance? I mean, does it need painted? Does it?
It's looking kind of tired.
Yeah.
That channel marker that serves as the, I mean, if nothing else, a coat of paint and turn the bushes back.
And maybe DPW, yeah, but I, I, I think if we could get.
Clean it up a little bit?
Yeah.
Maybe get beautifications opinion? And have them direct.
I know a few remarks. I'll hear from some of them.
Direct DPW. Um, and then secure parks and recreation property is satisfied through our grant requirements. I think we order to community confidence and safety, review charter amendments, I think, still makes sense. You know, we have work session tonight. Uh, enhance city branding, uh, communication both physically and virtually. Um, that probably can be combined with that last one, Craig, a rebrand soon around the idea of being a small town without our recreational opportunities. Um, any concerns with that from anyone? Um, implement plan for information sharing, digital marquee signs, SMS matches, et cetera. Again, just about communicating with our residents and keeping them informed. Uh, and saw crosswalk controls between, uh, Coast Guard Park and Ottawa Sands Park. I, I thought we said that.
That can, that can be struck, um.
Not a construction.
Well, we've got, they've got tons of parking in Coast Guard or in, uh, Ottawa Sands Park now. Uh, the parking always used to be the issue. People wanted to get over there, they had to park at Coast Guard Park and deal with the traffic. So that's not an issue anymore. And I think we'd be okay with leaving it exactly the way it is.
Craig, um, last thing, I, I would, um, just ask that, uh, on fiscal responsibility, on keeping and maintaining a budget, that we just update it to include the bullets we had last year.
Okay.
About this council continuously, uh, reviewing revenue streams and expenditure. Identifying errors for potential cost savings. I think this council's done a good job of that, reviewing different lease agreements and bringing them up to date.
And it's not a goal that it's just like mission accomplished. It's an ongoing thing. So it's something that we can strive for.
Yep. On that, great job to your intern.
Yep. We'll revise this have for next meeting, adopt.
And we also have anything regarding city goals for twenty twenty-five? Seeing none. Let's move on to seven G work session, city charter amendments. So we have five of them that didn't pass.
Correct.
Oh, we only have three, right, that didn't pass related to the?
That's correct. Number of signatures from fifteen to six did not pass. Uh, city clerk certification of petitions didn't pass. Uh, the gender neutral pronouns in the city charter didn't pass. And then, uh, pay increase and the fifty dollars a meeting didn't pass.
About the gender thing? That's become kind of new.
People misunderstood it.
Well, but Trump has said there's no, it's he and she period.
Yeah, I, I, I talked to people afterwards and they misunderstood it. They, they saw it as a, uh, more of a DEI thing than anything else. And even when I said, no, we're just trying to, you know, right now, our city clerk is not a he.
Right.
Needs to be a he, she, you know, or they or something, you know? And the way it was worded, that was, that was my big, that was my biggest pet peeve, I guess, with the way it finally appeared on the ballot is that the way we wrote it got gutted.
Yes.
And people didn't have enough information in front of them on the ballot to truly understand those, those, those measures.
Was that a legal recommendation?
No.
Or was that, was that?
No, it was just, it was just, you know, as we went through the charter, uh, that, that section of, uh, section three of the charter at looking at fixing the problem we were having with city elections, that was just something I saw that said, you know, we ought to kind of go through the whole thing and, and take care of the gender issues, you know, not meaning.
I understand.
Gender fluidity. But let's, you know, if, if, if there's a woman in a particular office, we shouldn't be calling her a he, vice versa.
Unfortunately, uh, some of my feedback from the public was that it was kind of a partisan uh, view of
Yeah.
A, a change to the, to the charter.
I get it. I get it.
And considering that it was during a presidential election, it was kind of a hot button issue.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, when they read the ballot initiative on the ballots, it didn't have any context. You know, you can't, you know, I think a lot of this, these could be fixed with some context.
Like I said, the language that we had worked on was very, very different than what actually appeared on the ballot.
Yes.
So even for example, even the first one where that failed about the number of signatures, some context explaining that there are so many spaces on one page would probably change people's mind. Um.
It was a close vote.
Sure, but it, but I'm guessing that a lot of people have no idea why we were making that change. And a lot of people aren't in favor of making changes for the sake of making changes. And so without context, without a message behind these changes.
Right.
Citizens are left to make their own interpretation. And then the environment that we had in November, this is what we got.
I think it should be explained how many is required now.
Now, I don't know what we can put on about it, but I know that as a city council and as a city, we can probably communicate better to our citizens exactly, maybe not exactly, maybe it is exactly factually what is going on around these initiatives. I don't think that we communicated real great out of city hall or as a city council. We relied on local media to, to do some write-ups. But to be honest, most people don't even subscribe to the Tribune. So they were left on their own on election day to try to figure this out. Um, and I think it's kind of our responsibility as a council to promote this to the public. I, I think they all need to be pursued. Uh, you don't, you're not, I'm not arguing against that. What I'm arguing for is better communication from city hall and from city council so that, so that citizens know what these mean and not how they read.
Your honor?
Yes.
I have a question for you, Craig. Uh, the governor has to, or the attorney general, whatever, has to approve the language of the proposals, correct?
Yes.
So the language that Phil put forward, that we put forward had changed because of the, the legalities of, uh, whatever, whoever was in charge, correct?
Some comments from your attorney general's office, yes.
That's why some of the language was changed.
I know that and I saw that language. And even that language, by the time it hit the ballot, was different.
Right.
I, I don't know.
And I don't know, I don't know where that happened, whether it happened in the, in the county clerk's office or where, you know, it's, it's.
Yeah, we spent a couple hours.
Yeah, and, and we sat with the county clerk and went over this and he understood us. And, and how in the world it changed, I just don't get it.
Your honor?
Yes. Yes.
Would it be possible to direct city staff to get us some information about what we are allowed to say or do to promote valid initiatives as councilmen or as the city? I, I don't know what I'm allowed to say, what I'm allowed to do to promote a, a valid initiative.
You're allowed to explain it, but you can't point them in a direction to vote.
Can you get me some material that, that explains exactly what we can say?
Yep.
Um, and then, I think we need that so we can better craft. We need to know what we can say and how we can say it, and then, once we know that, then we need a plan to communicate this to the public. We cannot rely on local media to communicate it for us.
Well.
Your honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, we could put the text of the proposed amendments on the city website, correct, Greg?
Yeah, I think we did last time, didn't we? It was on the website, charter members.
Yeah, it was on the website.
That's legal for us to do. Where you draw the line is, you can't say, I'm requesting you to vote for this.
But, but couldn't we, we could, could we put more of an explanation on it on the website, though?
We could put more.
Put the logic behind it.
Well, you can put the proposal and explain why and, uh, why the city is, or the city council proposing it. Explain why we're proposing it. You can't say.
Vote this way.
We, we're supporting it. You can say, this is what, why we proposed it going forward.
I'd, I'd still like to see some legal guidelines as to what we say as a city.
Craig, you can get that for us.
Craig, do you mind looking to see if there's any MML training online that's available for us?
So, is the consensus of council looking to put the five charter members that did not pass back on the ballot in November?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I, I think, I think we definitely need the three. I can, I guess, be persuaded one way or the other for the other two, but I think we definitely need the three, that's my opinion.
I would scrap the pay raise and, and median compensation stuff. I think that was pretty clear, and I think the public spoke on that personally, yeah.
I would know people voted, as I'm concerned, so.
Agreed.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see just the, the three related to the elections.
Yep, agreed.
Three, I see. Wow, okay. You don't want to do the, I think you should.
I, 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 I'm not, I'm not in favor of putting it on again. Um, I, I think those were actually the ones that were, that were worded clearly, and the citizens could digest. And to be honest, they, they, they voted no pretty overwhelmingly, and, uh, I'm, I'm not compelled to shove it in front of citizens again, um, right away. Um, it's the ones that were worded poorly that I think that citizens should be given another shot at with some, with some better context.
Craig, you got enough to run forward with?
Yes, thank you.
Craig, when do we have to have that process started to get on the ballot in November?
I can confirm that for you. Last I looked, they had the May election date guidelines posted, and it's not through the rest of the year yet.
Your honor?
Yes.
Could you clarify that? I didn't quite get, get to what you said.
The state posts an election calendar for us clerks to follow, and they have up through the May special election posted at this time. When I was on last week, and they didn't have anything further into August, November yet.
So we could technically wait till, like, August to put it on the November ballot?
No, we're gonna need it before then. If I had to guess, it'd be April.
Okay, all right, thank you. It takes two. Oh, yeah, I'll be, I'll send all this thing back in again.
Hope you're all set with this, uh, work session item. Moving forward, any public comments this evening? Seeing none. Report, city manager.
No report.
Okay. Who'd like to go first here?
No report.
Okay.
No.
No report. Yeah, heavy? I'm so pleased you're feeling.
Um, I would just like to commend Amber on her post-election audit. She, um, goes great, uh, overall, uh, positive, what was it, what was it? Positive overall, overall. Yes, very good, thank you.
No report.
No report, okay. I only had a couple things. First thing, Councilman Si has just covered. Congratulations on that. I hope it wasn't too much of a ordeal for you.
Nope, it was good.
Always great to have good elections. And then, uh, last Saturday, a week ago Saturday, I was here, uh, they had an amateur radio field day. And I spent an hour and a half here at the lot of fun. Time, uh, for civil defense, what they were doing for disasters. And the report.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.